It's 7 o'clock. I'll call for an opinion of the Westmoreland City Council to order for February 15, 2018. Well, Dwayne Garner is going to come and do our devotion this evening. We're glad to have you with us tonight.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. It was an honor when David called and asked me if I would do this. And I said, "Absolutely. I'll do whatever." So I'm going to go watch the game as soon as it's over with. I'll finish up and I'm going to go watch the Eagles win tonight. Isn't that the plan? That's really what we're praying for, right? Okay, at least I know a couple of boys that are. My oldest son is a youth pastor down in Florida. And I called him today after the tragedy of the shootings that happened down there at the schools. I called him and said, "Tell me what the atmosphere is like down there. What's the buzz? What's happening?" And he said, "Dad," he said, "people are terrified." He said, "People are just terrified of the other kids in school. They're terrified of walking the streets, of going to the malls. The world is changing so much." And I thought tonight, I would just encourage us to be a light. You know, the Bible calls us to be a city set upon a hill, a light that can't be hidden. And so I thought we would just take a second and pray that way and ask that Westmoreland would stand out, be a little bit different than the rest of the world, and maybe be that light. There's a couple of things that we notice in tragedies like this. The first is that we start to blame. And so I went to social media. And I began to look at all of my friends, whether they are Republican, Democrat, Christian believers, not believers. And I just started looking at their posts. And I noticed that we're really divided with a division that's happening through tragedy. Rather than it being a place that unifies us, people start blaming. And I noticed there was blame on guns instantly. There's a group that said, "It's the gun's fault. It's the gun's fault." Other people have said, "It was the people," you know, crazy people. "It's their fault." And it's the government, you know, it's the government's fault. And the Bible says in 1 John, chapter 5, verse 19, says, "The whole world is under control of the evil one." And ultimately, it really comes down to that we have an evil world. And if we find blame in a person, in a government, in a gun, we're really missing the blame. The blame is that we have a world that's good and evil. And we have a God that I believe is good, and we have an enemy that is evil. And so my prayer tonight, I wrote down three prayers that I'm praying tonight. The first is that we won't find ourselves fighting against each other but with each other or for each other. The second prayer is that those who are hurting tonight will experience God's love and mercy, that there are dads today without sons. There are wives today without their husbands. There are schools today without teachers. Coaches, teams without coaches today. And my prayer is that they will experience God's love and mercy. Psalms 46:1 says, "God is our refuge and strength, a very present help in trouble." And so right now, that's our prayer. From Westmoreland, we can make an absolute difference. We can pray something. And finally, my prayer is that Westmoreland would be a standard of unity, fighting together, not with each other, against each other. So can we pray tonight and ask that blessing and pray over this meeting tonight? God, thank you that Westmoreland is exceptional, that, God, we are not an average community, God, that we are fighting not against each other, but, God, we know this is such an evil time and an evil world. God, unify us, band us together. I pray that we would be a bond that is so close, God, that, God, the things that we fight over, the things that we struggle over, God, when we weigh those against the tragedies that other families have faced yesterday and the days before, God, sometimes they just seem small. God, I pray that we would be a city that's different than everyone else, that we know that you are the very present help, that you are the answer for other communities. I pray that Westmoreland, God, would just be a community that loves, shows mercy, has grace, encourages one another, and supports, God. Father, I thank you, Lord, that this is an unusual place, God. And, God, you do great things in unusual places. Bless this council meeting. Lord, I pray that they will make decisions, God, that will better and strengthen this community. God, I thank you for unity. God, I thank you, Lord, that this is a protected community, God. Father, I thank you, Lord, for every believer, God, every person that's in this room tonight, God. I thank you, Lord, that you have a great work in store for them. Bless them in their homes. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen. God bless. Thank you.
(Inaudible)
Ms. Kelly, if you will call.
Bill. Smalling.
Here.
Carter.
Here.
Carpenter.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Let the record reflect that everyone is present. We have a forum, so we'll continue with the meeting. And the next item is to adopt the agenda. And I have a couple of additions that I know need to be placed on it. One is to discuss some sewer pumps that we lost this week due to the storms. And the next item is Resolution R 022018-1. Westmoreland, we're requesting the Community Development Law Grant.
Make a motion to pass the agenda with those in it.
Second.
We have a motion, and there's a second, to adopt the agenda with the additions to it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next item is public comments on the items from the agenda tonight. Ricky Graves, you are up to come and speak.
Well, I was came tonight because I was sort of concerned about Trina Line, who has built a new building for a business, and my name will get into it. I don't know if this is going to come up later or what, but I'm here to speak for him and let him know that I'm backing him. And I would just like to find out what the holdup is when a man builds a building, pays payments on it, pays insurance on it, wants to get in, and why he can't. And if there is a reason why, why wasn't that brought up before?
Okay. Let me interrupt you for just a moment. We are going to be having a public hearing on that.
Okay, that's fine.
Very sharp.
You want me to put my name down? I did. I don't know how to do it. First time up here.
That's fine. I just wanted to let you know that we will be having a public hearing. And if you want to continue to speak, that's fine.
No, that's fine. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, next item is the minutes from the January 18, 2018.
(Inaudible)
January 18, 2018 meeting.
I make a motion to adopt the minutes of the January 18, 2018 meeting as presented.
One second.
We have a motion, and a proper second, to adopt the minutes from the 2018 meeting, January 18. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item is the minutes from the special call meeting of January 22, 2018.
So moved it, sir.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a proper second to accept the minutes as read from the January 22 meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, lock sign. Motion carries unanimously. Next item is the January financial statement. Will we adopt the financial statement? We have a motion and a proper second to adopt the January financial statement, 2018. Discussion.
There's one line that I will be changing, and that's in sewer. One bill was applied to the truck repairs, and it was supposed to go to regular sewer repairs. It was about $2,900. So that's why it looks like the sewer vehicle repairs are over, but I will correct it.
I'll bring your attention also to the very last page where we will be discussing some pumps, and I was looking at them on the agenda. You'll notice that maintenance and repair is considerably over budget for the labor and the materials is very close to using all that. We're going to have to make some amendments to the budget in the near future. Of course, the $180,000 going for the repairs out there can be taken out of the depreciation fund. So just wanted to make that note so that if you're looking at it and have some questions, you know, we're probably going to bail. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, lock sign? Motion carries unanimously. Under old business, we will now be entertaining a public hearing, and we'll have the second reading of ordinance number 0012018-1. Now, quick follow. The public notice went out for the hearing. City of Westmoreland will hold a public hearing on second reading of ordinance number 0012018-1, an ordinance to rezone property on Thursday, February 15, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the Westmoreland Community Room located at 5300 Austin Peak Highway. The purpose of the hearing is for the rezoning from R1 to R2 of the Graves property located at 895 New Highway 52 East. And all citizens are invited to attend. We appreciate you, Coach.
C2.
C2.
Okay.
From R1 to C2. This has passed on first reading. It requires two readings by law, so we'll have the second reading tonight. But before we have the second reading and the council votes on this, we do have a public hearing. So this public hearing is hereby open. Mr. Graves, would you like to come back and continue?
Maybe later, but as for now, I've said what I can say.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can anybody say anything after the vote?
After the vote, it'll be a done deal.
Be a done deal. Does that mean it'll be finished?
Mm-hmm.
That mean you won't be able to go on?
Well, after the vote, if it passes, then the next thing will be to go before the zoning Board of Appeals and ask for a variance. If it's voted down, that means it does not pass. It's up to the members of this council to vote, and it'll either pass on the second reading or it will not pass. You got any comments on it, too?
I might be able to clarify a few things for the public if you wish for them to. Property was R1 zone. So when it came about to change the business, it had to be changed, had to go for planning zone and request the zone and change first. It passed planning zoning from R1 to C2. Then after that, it's sent before the city council to be rezoned. Anything that is rezoned requires an ordinance that has to be two readings and a public hearing. Like I said, it passed unanimously the first time. The biggest holdup was we ended up with like three or four different setbacks from the state. We got all that setback. So once they pass this, next Thursday night, we'll set a, at the planning and zoning hearing, planning and zoning meeting, we'll also be having a zoning Board of Appeals meeting that will approve the variance. I mean, I can't sit here and guarantee you what the zoning Board of Appeals will do, but in my years being here, they meet all the requirements for the appeals. So I don't see a problem with that. But I can't sit here and, you know, absolutely say that you have to appeal. But I'm comfortable that, you know, we've got a pretty good planning zoning and zoning Board of Appeals, so I believe, you know, everything will be done appropriately through there after what takes place here.
Has the state and county already approved it?
They don't have to.
They don't have to?
No. It comes through planning zoning. The only reason this has come before the council is because it is a rezon. Everything else stays in planning zoning. Anytime you rezon property from residential to commercial, it has to come before the city council. And there's been some trip-ups along the way. Like I said, most of it's been, I ended up with three different right-of-ways from the state, certified right-of-ways that end up not being the correct one. With that being said, I mean, I have good faith in the zoning Board of Appeals. You know, I can't guarantee anything, but I don't think it'll be an issue.
So just clear.
You might want to clear up why the variance has to be.
The variance has to be done because the T-Dot Supervisor issued us a certified paper that had the setbacks on it. That was at 45 feet. Our city engineer went out there and measured it. The setback, they were 45 feet. It's what I had when the building was built. Then come find out after further checking, one showed 200 feet. It went from, we had 125, we had 150, we had 175, and 200 is what we had on setbacks out there from the state and tax mounds. The correct setback according to the head person at the state for highway feet to right there is 175 feet, which left them 9.7 feet short on one side and 13.6 feet short on the other side. So that's the reason you have to have the zoning Board of Appeals for the variance.
But it can be passed.
Sure. I mean, I can't guarantee it'll pass, but.
I understand it can be passed.
Yes, it's within the guidelines. And it'll also be looked at at our state from, our state of, I'm a bad man.
(Inaudible).
Our state will also be looking at it as well. So he'll help with the recommendation on it and all that.
So this is the property per se. Both other aspects will have to be met, or it's commercial property.
It's planning zoning, right. Their job here, basically, all they're doing is rezoning the property, not the building. Well, the building will come into play, but it'll have to meet commercial standards, which... But the main thing is to get through here tonight with this and then do it on the Board of Appeals next Thursday. Then the rest of that will be handled appropriately. And I will go ahead and let everybody know when I talk to some councilmen, I'd done this about three weeks ago. Even though it's an off-relationship, and Cody can tell you and Keith can tell you too, I don't stick my nose in nobody's business, but I will be bringing in a third party to help inspect that property, to make sure there's no conflict with me whatsoever.
Does everyone pretty much understand that the council is in charge of all rezoning of property within corporate city limits? And that's what we're looking at tonight. We're looking at a piece of property that we're taking from residential level one to commercial level two. So that's, a lot of folks have talked about the building, and the building will be addressed as a, pretty much a separate issue at a later date. But right now, the council is just looking at the property. Other comments before we close the public hearing? Pastor used to say, "Are all minds cleared?"
Excellent.
Okay. Here I close the public hearing, and now we'll go back to regular session, and I'll entertain a motion.
Make the motion to pass ordinance 0012018-1.
Second motion. Okay, we have a motion from Alderman Lee, and a second from Alderman Bento to pass ordinance Any further discussion from the council? Okay. You have a call from the local.
Smalling.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Carpenter.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes. Let the record reflect, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda.
I thank y'all. I just come for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming. Next item on the agenda is Tim Wafer, Uso Parks. Mr. Wafer, you're ready.
Um, tonight we'd like to give you one festival that we'd like to have approved. The other thing to start getting and go through.
(Inaudible) Motion is to make this ten dollars.
(Inaudible)
I'd like to give you an oversight before I get into the one thing we'd like to get approval on. Volunteer Westmoreland has this motto, "We use the past to celebrate the future, and the future is the children of this town." We're starting with the railroad festival, then go to a Monday festival, a 10-day festival, and a 30-day festival at the end of the year. So we'd like, at the work study, we would like for you to leave us with an open mind. Take everything we have with a strictly open mind. No preconceivance, no, nothing like that, because we'll catch when you start it. I know people here have a closed mind. It will not be tolerated when we present that, because we have this power in this town. We have the power of the referendum. Now, I'd like to present you, we'd like a festival on the 56th of May, Volunteer Westmoreland. We'd like to have a festival that celebrates the railroad. And it goes on and on. This prayer, which we have used before, the words we use is reverse everyone else. We started either the high school or the middle school, either one, come down this way rather than all that way around. We'd also like permission to build bleachers so that people along the way on Park Street can sit down and watch. We noticed the Christmas festival, they've all backed away. Now they need bleachers. So we'd like permission on that before our festival in June or in May, because we've got the number, and we need to know if we're, we can do that. It'll involve all three parts. And we'd like to have that open all the way. We had done this two ways once before. If you think three's too much, was it what last time? Go with two. This right here was locked off the whole day. Then the problem we had with, one of the, well, there were some things going on that wasn't appreciated. We lost our business over it. So I need, I need approval on this. You're not finished. You have any questions, Mr. Wafer?
Kelly, just give me all the requirements of the event, insurance.
For each separate event, there will be a special event application to be filled out that will go to Tim to.
Well, I mean, I have this one. That's the other one I'm wanting approval on. The rest of them will come before the, yeah.
Then each one doesn't have to come before the council?
Well, no, we just want this one approved, because Tom is the gentleman. If we went before you, they would have to go to that. That takes away a month.
But regarding the event itself, that's just something that we just have to make sure that nobody else has it and it gets approved through Tim.
Well, I want them to approve it.
Okay.
I mean, that's what we did before, is come to them and approve it, because it's never been done before.
The second page is regarding the insurance.
I'm aware of all that. That would be in place.
And that's what Mr. Bill was asking me about, is I don't have anything as of yet, but if they.
We're doing lots, lots of work in this town. We're not going to be under it. We had doubled the amount last time we bought, we started working here. We had one to protect our board and one to protect the agency or the organization. Don't worry about the insurance. That would be in place.
So you're requesting for the May 5th and 6th Festival, selling Great Railroad?
We got this idea from Facebook, history of Westmoreland, past and present, however it's worded, some old coders like I'm one of them. Sometimes I feel like a little third after I've lost all this weight. Thank you, God. So we're talking about, why isn't, like it used to be, the railroad, the railroad, the park, the games, and all that stuff, like, come on, on, on. It went on for, like, me to go in and read it. It's unbelievable. And that's where we come up with the idea for all of our festivals. Everything that made Westmoreland great, the cucumber. Did you know I saw, I saw from one of mine, the cucumber was a major crop back in the time, 1856, 1886? So we need to pay tribute to it.
What will be those hours on May 6th and May 6?
On the 6th is 6 to 11. On Friday, 6 to 11. The 6th is from 7:00 AM with a walk and run to 11:00 at night.
And you're asking that Park Street be shut down for that time period?
Yes.
Yes.
John, do we need a motion before we discuss it, or can we discuss it, or?
All it's on the agenda just says, "Yeah, we're used to parks." I'm not sure what it is you're going to be discussing, or should we vote now?
Yeah. Where do you go?
(Inaudible) procedure.
Well, can we just kind of make a motion for it to work, to heighten the work study until you have the information over?
Sure.
So that.
Well, we'll pull this in the table, because I told you, we can't, we can't take a minutes law. So I'm finished, Mr. Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Ray.
And we'll see you at the referendum.
Next item on the agenda is Blue Line Properties Water Bill. This was discussed at Great Lake at the work study, so I'll turn it over to the council.
I'll make the motion that the water bill for Blue Line, they'd be charged $1,572.17 cents. I'll make the motion that, uh, water bill for Blue Line, they'd be charged $1,572.17 for that most water bill.
Second motion.
I'm sorry, $1,572.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Have a motion by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Bannell, that Blue Line Properties will pay the water bill in the amount of $1,572.17. Other discussion.
What number is that? Is that half of that total bill of 3144?
Yes. Other discussion. Call for the vote.
Carter.
Yes.
Carpenter.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Bannell.
Yes.
Smalling.
Yes. But record reflect that motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to hire Zachary Culberson as a full-time officer for the Westmoreland Police Department.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to introduce to you Zachary Culberson. Zachary Culberson is a graduate of Gatlinburg High School. He is also a graduate of Walter State Community College, where he holds an associate's degree in criminal justice. He's also a graduate of Walter State Community College Police Academy, where he has completed basic police training. He is a state-certified officer. Uh, he has a squeaky clean background, very strong young man. Twenty, twenty-two years old.
He's healthy, but he's...
He's healthy. Went through a couple of applications, and I felt like that Culberson is the best one of the bunch, and I believe he would make the city and the police department a wonderful police officer.
I make the motion to hire Mr. Culberson, full-time officer for Westmoreland Police Department. I've met him and impressed with him, and he's got a very good grip for a handshake. We're gonna get asked that to us.
Is that you, Ms. Shaw?
Yes.
Have a motion by Councilman Williams and second by Councilwoman Carpenter to hire Zachary Culberson as a full-time officer at the standard pay for a full-time certified officer. And, uh, other discussion. Call for the vote.
Carpenter.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Bannell.
Yes.
Smalling.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
But record reflect that motion carries unanimously.
Our applications have picked up, haven't they?
Yes, sir. For what? This will, uh, this will actually put us to full staff.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Thomas Fisher to get his wastewater certification. With a certification like that, normally we give a $1 per hour increase, and, uh, that's what we're here for, is to, uh, pre-plan for that action to happen.
I'll make a motion if we get, get Thomas Fisher wastewater certification for $1 per hour.
Second.
He's been to the class. He's just waiting to take his test, is that right? Do something.
No, this is different. Like you...
Yeah, I don't think it's Mrs. De La Higuita. Okay. Yeah, it's what class he was in. He's just trying to pre-plan for it.
Well, if we have it, it hasn't been in the past three years, because that was, well, two and a half years. When I started here is when, I think, when they wanted to vote for it, before anybody went.
We get ready to run it.
And actually, it's very good, because, you know, the employee knows what to expect, and the council knows what to expect also. And this requires a GED officer. That's correct. He's working on that. And it's what's so bad, he already has it, because he's in the... And the government can't locate it also.
Any other discussion? Call for the vote.
Lee.
Yes.
Bannell.
Yes.
Smalling.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Carpenter.
Yes.
Record reflect that motion carries unanimously. Next item is for the City of Westmoreland to accept Portland Cares vouchers. This is a program that we began with, uh, Mid Cumberland last year. It's worked very successful, and Portland Cares is interested, uh, in, uh, doing outreach, and, uh, we just needed to make it official. Make the motion to accept the Portland Cares vouchers to Mid Cumberland.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Smalling and second by Councilman Bannell to accept the Portland Cares vouchers. Any discussion?
Bannell.
Yes.
Smalling.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Carpenter.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
But record show it passes unanimously. Next item is job descriptions for City Hall employees. You have those job descriptions in front of you with the correctional debate from the work studies.
I make a motion to accept the job descriptions for, uh, City Recorder, Finance Director, the Deputy Clerk, City Clerk, and Court Clerk as written and presented to us, um, at the work study.
I'll second that motion. Have a motion for Councilwoman Carpenter and a second by Councilman Smalling to accept the job descriptions for City Hall employees as written. Discussion?
Appreciate the hard work, looking together. Thank you.
Very good. This was an endeavor that began 13 months ago, so we also will go and return slow. Call for the vote.
Smalling.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Carpenter.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Bannell.
Yes.
The record showed that, that motion carries unanimously. Next item is the playground equipment replacement. Councilman Smalling.
Okay. Y'all mostly all aware that after the meeting last month, I met with a group of citizens about playground equipment. And Ms. Jody Matina has a presentation that she'd like to pass out and speak on. We've had one meeting, and this presentation basically outlined that one meeting. And, uh, after she gives time with her presentation, I'd like to make the motion that this group, being a group, that kind of heads up the community involvement with this playground equipment. And there'll be some details that need to be worked out that we can talk about as we do a study, about how the funds are raised and who holds those accounts and stuff. That'll be, I'm gonna make that motion after she gives her presentation.
Hi. I'm Jody Matina, and on Thursdays, I usually am, am teaching a bell choir up in Scottsdale on Thursdays, so I'm missing that, because this is really important to me. The park has been, Dr. Carter Park has been falling apart for quite some time. My kids play there. All of our kids play there, and we know that it finally had to be taken out, because it's just not safe. So a lot of moms, dads, people in the community got together, and we've come up with, um, a proposal to make it revitalize, bring history back into it. And make it so that we don't have to wait. I do. So our objective is to form a community committee with three to 14 leaders to focus on rejuvenating and improving Dr. Carter Park and our city. We propose to start immediately in the spring to replace a better, small to medium structure, um, so that it's just not blank, or the one was just removed. We'd like to do this in three phases. The first phase is, of course, to put in the small to medium structure. The second phase, um, with fundraising, hopefully some city funding, um, and some grants, we'd like to put in history of Westmoreland, so like a railroad play structure. Then our third phase would bring in the Little Tunnel play structure, along with maybe some musical education. So like roundabout Owen Bradley. So this would probably take one to two years. Um, we'd also like to go with, um, a playground structure company that offers community build, so that the kids, the youth, the adults of the community can, um, participate in building the structures. That way, um, it will bring empowerment. They'll have a sense of ownership, hopefully taking care of it, so that we're not just doing this for our kids. We'll be doing this for their grandkids, and it's gonna last a long time. As far as fundraising and donations, we would ask the City Recorder to set up an account at City Hall, so that any individual or group can go directly through the city. It would just be like a park revitalization program. We do have a meeting next week. The time is still kind of up in the air to meet with landscape structures, to kind of like, what can we do for our city, kind of meeting, and it's open to the public. So I think that's all I have to say. Let me just make sure. So I would just ask for the city's approval for our project for our community group to go forward with this.
That is pretty, that's pretty straightforward, and we just want to be recognized as the group that, uh, will handle this, and at this time, any of the funds will go through City Hall. Is that correct?
That's correct. We already have some moms planning a fundraiser, so we felt the best to go, to go through the city.
So I'll make a motion to that, to recognize this group as the Midtown Park Playground Replacement Committee.
Is there a name for the group?
Just Westmoreland, Dr. Carter, Revitalization.
Yeah, Midtown Park.
Yeah, there you go.
Midtown Park Committee.
Midtown Park. I like that.
So will be any interaction between the park committee and the city and this committee, or is it gonna function?
I'll second it.
I'm sorry.
I'll second it.
Ready to talk about that.
Okay.
I think this is just one of those situations where time is kind of of the essence for this, particularly because with better weather coming along, that park gets heavily used. And the sooner they can start on this process, the, uh, hopefully faster it can be replaced, so...
It looks pretty sharp, this picture. Are we talking start with that, or you're gonna start small?
That would be phase two.
Phase one is...
Because it would be something that we could build off of.
Have that little building in the back, when it's all out.
Something comparable to what we had.
Something within $20,000 to $30,000, and then we can build off of that. So our goal would be to have the railroad, the Little Tunnel, hopefully some musical note, education stuff put in there. Be nice to have some plaques to say, you know, along the side, this is where the railroad depot was, this is what it meant to Westmoreland, so we can educate the adults at the same time the kids are playing.
Tim spoke at our little committee meeting, and of course, y'all all know this. It won't be as simple as replacing what we had with what we have. You've gotta meet the modern standards and the ADA compliance, all those things, which unfortunately are gonna raise the cost of this up pretty hefty, even for the replacement of the piece that we just took out. That's one of the things, it'll take a group outside the city to work through those efforts and to understand what's actually gonna be done, and everything, and communicating with everybody. I think this is great.
And just to confirm moving forward, you're going to work with, uh, getting insurance and things like that, every name, so...
Yeah, everything will be state and federally safety checked off and insurance of that.
Kelly, had you talked with Gary Jacob on the money, of being handled at Money Park?
On my part. I told him I was interested in being involved in it, but I didn't want to do anything I shouldn't do. The main thing with me is if I'm handling funds in City Hall, I can't be a part of handling funds outside of City Hall through the committee or whatever, so, um...
So we wouldn't need to have like a delegated person?
You, you would need to have somebody that would bring the money to City Hall. We would restate it earmark it for the line item for playgrounds or, however we need to do it. We already have a line item for parks, and I don't, but you might want a specific line for playground equipment, just to, just to...
Yeah, because our park line item includes the ballparks as well.
Right, right, so if this is specifically for Midtown Park, that's not, it's very easy to do.
Would you need that to be a part of the motion, to be able to do that?
No, it's, no.
And when they have fundraisers, they'll have to be done in the name of this group, instead of the name of the City of Westmoreland, right?
Yes.
So as the city, we can't actually solicit funds or anything like that. I can, and I just was checking for myself what I could do. I can support your fundraisers and everything like that. I can be involved in it. I just can't be handling the money on that park. We don't want any question of ethics whatsoever, so...
Absolutely.
So the city can't solicit funds, but we can have an account set aside to...
It's still a general fund. It's just a separate line item. It's like, uh, where right now, we've got the one for parks. I'll just stick another one in there that says specifically Midtown Park Equipment.
And the group have fundraisers, make like, say this earmark for the park.
Just wondering what the, uh, what the difference is in earmarking, putting it in a general fund versus putting it in a fund in banks or...
I don't think we would want to open a separate...
No, I'm talking about the group.
Is there, you know, would they still be tax exempt? I guess if they did, 501(c)(3) would...
It would take forever for us to get a 501(c)(3), if we had to do that. We'd probably try to funnel it through, see if an existing 501(c)(3) could be like a fiscal, a fiscal sponsor.
Yeah, you got Miss John.
Anything that's, I mean, private group gives to the city for a particular purpose, that's, and the city is a tax-exempt organization, and there's no problem with that. The city can keep its fund and appropriate the money to spend how it sees fit. I mean, people make donations to cities all the time, and the city appropriates the money. In this case, it appropriates the use of the park.
So no reason to go through a 501(c)(3).
Just as long as you have a treasurer that you're comfortable with using, and they bring, you know, they can bring it to us once a week, they can bring it to us one time, they can bring it to us every day. I don't care. Very good counting as if we had a 501(c)(3).
Just a couple of comments. I think there's corporate sponsors which are on board. I think they would like to see it happen. A comment was made to me when it was being discussed, that well, if they would raise $40,000 to send the van to Florida, then if we get to work on it, we could, we can raise funds also, so...
That'd be great.
It's for the kids, you know.
I'm very impressed with that, I like it.
If anyone, but if anyone is concerned about the tax deductibility of it, they need to write their checks to the City of Westmoreland, not to some other group. That would not be tax deductible, so... Designate the purpose, say for parks improvements or whatever.
What's the limit on that? Like if they do $500, does it matter?
Yeah, anything.
They don't put no limits on it.
Not soliciting to the city, they're soliciting to their cause.
Thank you, Rachel.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. There's any other discussion? Down this time. Whatever you were reading.
Carter.
Yes.
Carpenter. Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Bannell.
Yes.
Smalling.
Yes.
Record reflect that motion carries unanimously, and we want to say thank you to the Midtown Park Committee.
Come up with an acronym, that's what everybody uses, is that, still, this is law.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the Southern County CDVG grant. This was discussed at the, uh, previous meeting, also the, the work study, last couple of work studies. I don't know if we have any new information to, to be brought forward, and how many letters, or what has to be actually voted on here.
Is there approval, Ms. Kim, on those letters, correct?
In short, she needs a few things for me, you know, schedule rights, and how much to repay, and then there are two letters that they need. But my understanding, and I think we've talked about this a few times now, when those letters are signed off on, that says that we're going, that we're in agreement to do what needs to be done. So, uh, that, you know, so we're going along with the county's application for it.
That's a good layout, we could...
Yes.
And one of the letters is that tap the waiver letter, which would mean those who qualify financially would not have to pay the tax.
There, there's a breakdown on those numbers on him, he surveyed that did qualify. But just like on the first profile, these other grants close now, people still have the ability to put in the application to qualify for it every day.
I will make the motion if we allow the county to cook our water system on this CDVG grant.
If awarded, they can.
If awarded, yeah, we're gonna go.
But you're in agreement, it's going to be the Southern County City Hall application, but I...
So that's two, two roads, right? It's in this...
Right coat and compensation and Harrison line.
No, compensation didn't make it.
Compensation didn't make it. Compensation didn't make it.
They didn't make it.
Not the answer, sir.
See, I didn't do that much.
Oh, so they've selected the routes?
There's more. These are just the ones that were Westmoreland, or something. The states, the CDVG people review the application, and come to ratio for pumping station roads. Based off of those actually returned surveys.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the terms of the Southern County CDVG grant. Any further discussion?
I apologize, but was there any new information discussed at the last meeting? Because I know that at the previous council meeting, there was discussion in terms of not knowing what the depreciation fees would be, or if it would be negligible, or...
There wasn't a lot of information at the meeting, but our auditor spoke to it. It was twenty thousand over twenty years for every million dollars, is that correct? And this just grant caps out at nine hundred thousand.
Oh.
And our portion of it is just a very small portion.
And he was explaining that, like, it's not actual money that's being spent, it's just money that's being reserved in case of it, so you're not necessarily spending that amount.
So as far as being held under the gun for depreciation next year, it's not that much. But that was the big question, I believe, that you had.
Yeah, and that answers it. I would like to say that down the road, just to prepare, because I know this will be, you know, obviously be coming every year, it would be really nice if we had like, and I know you said like twenty thousand per million spent or something, it would be really nice to get like a set number on per household or per...
The next thing about the grant is because the county is a three-star certified, without the three stars, it's eighty-twenty, but because it is a three-star, it's seventeen eighty-two or eighty-three, or whatever the math turns out to be. They had made the decision that they were going to not ask for the full amount, and they're gonna overfund how much the county puts into the project to make it more competitive. So that will even lower some of our depreciation costs along that way.
Okay.
And with the pumping station issue, there's a good chance there's gonna be money at the end to complete that.
Yes.
Anything for the call for vote.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Bannell?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Record reflect that the motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda, I wanted to mention, was about sewer pumps. We had one that went down this week. We're gonna have prices into those, but that's why I pointed out what we were in the repair budget. And then there were secondary pumps, because it was underwater, it's gonna have to be rebuilt and have a new module and filter screen. Well, I think that's about six thousand dollars. So I want to bring that to the council's attention, and...
Our line item under sewer for line item nine forty-seven purchased pumps for twenty thousand, could some of that money be used with these pumps, or is that set aside for something else?
That's why that was put in there, so that we would have it available.
Right.
With what is happening with this, and with all the repairs that's being done, and all that we're doing with the contractors that are out there, I'm afraid that some of the money may not be coming out of the correct client. But we did put that money in there for pumps, and of course, we're... The next item on the agenda is for us to vote for a grant that was pretty much be specifically dedicated to pumping station one. And if anybody was left, it would go to the other station. What is unique about this situation is pumping station four that went down, and it's one that generally does not give trouble. But something happened with three of these power, and it was like one of the pumps that kicked out, and we finally found it and got everything looking good. But it was not doing its job anymore.
We'll have to have a budget amendment on that money that we voted on for the repair for the contractor, the sewer plant anyway, right? Because we don't have the money in line items for it.
Right.
So it'd have to be... Yes, we're voting a bit.
It does need to be appropriated.
Right.
According to what Mr. Paul said.
Is that a tri-county issue with the three things they Christie, or did...
When it first came, it's kind of like street lights out there. When it first came, but it couldn't find anything wrong, and then they turned, it was nothing wrong, and they got it repaired, and it came back. Everything took off like it's supposed to. Christian figures alone. Okay.
We don't need to vote on that, or just bring that to the...
No, I just wanted to bring it to the council's discussion. Next item is Resolution R-022018H1, Westmoreland is requesting community development block grant. We're going to ask for a motion being for five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, with it being going to the booster stations for rehab, especially booster station number one. The uplift station is in dire need of repair, and hopefully we can keep it going for a few more years, if this money comes through, it'll be of a great need to us.
I'll make the motion to retire the CDCD block grant, and those numbers. What is the cap on that grant?
About twenty-five.
What is the percentage of matching? Is it...
It'll be the same, because we're three-star.
Seven eighty-eight.
Well, we're actually, in order to increase our chances of getting it, we're only gonna ask for four hundred thousand. So that just, I think, for the county, it increases, gives us a more miracle points to be paid.
I made the motion.
It's been a second.
Part of the discussion. Okay. Call for the vote.
Lee?
Yes.
Bannell?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Record reflect that the motion carries unanimously.
Don't move. Are you done? I'm sorry.
We're done. Don't move.
Just a second.
It's a good thing you responded, like, I would be out the door, like...